And roll.
All right, few second warning.
Good morning. The time is now 9:33 a.m. and a quorum of the board is present. State Board of Education meeting of March 9, 2021 is called to order. Due to the COVID-19 national emergency and in accordance with Public Act 254 of 2020, State Board of Education Regular and Committee, the whole meeting is being convened with remote access technology. First item on the agenda is the approval of agenda and order of priority. Are there any items board members would like to add or delete from the agenda? President Albrecht?
Yes, I would like to add to the agenda a discussion and action on the resolution on waivers associated with state summative assessments and high stakes accountability measures in a pandemic for the 2020-2021 academic school year. I propose this addition follows item A, educational updates related to COVID-19.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Marilyn, if you could do a roll call vote, please.
Lipton?
Aye.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
Snyder? Snyder? Snyder, Nikki, are you muted? Come back to her in a minute. Strayhorn?
Yes.
Tilly? Tilly, you're muted?
Yes.
Thank you. Albrecht?
Yes.
And back to Snyder. Okay, you unmuted, Nikki? She may be having trouble with that. So we have seven eyes on that.
Okay, so we have a, we have a, an amended agenda. Do I have a motion to move the amended, the amended agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion to move the amended agenda. Do I have a second? I have support for the motion to move the amended agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. Marilyn, if you'd be kind enough to take another roll call vote.
Lipton?
Aye.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
Snyder? Still?
Yes, sorry. Having some technical difficulties this morning.
Yeah, I surmised that. I'm sorry about that. Thank you for your yes vote. Strayhorn?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
The discussion and action on resolution on waivers associated with state summative assessments and high stakes accountability measures in a pandemic for the 2021 academic school year was added to the agenda. It will follow item A, educational updates related to COVID-19. In accordance with the board's bylaws, before a vote is taken on an agenda item, the public is given opportunity to comment on the specific item under consideration. We will offer an opportunity for public comment on this item prior to a potential vote. If members of the public would like to provide comment on this specific agenda item, please email Marilyn Schneider at S C H N E I D E R M as in Mary at Michigan.gov. That's S C H N E I D E R M as in Mary at Michigan.gov. This is the same contact information for public participation that is listed on the Michigan Department of Education homepage where you join the meeting, www.michigan.gov/mde. Please be sure to note that you would like to comment on this specific item. All other public comments will occur immediately following lunch. Marilyn Schneider, our State Board Executive, whom you've just heard from, will introduce the members of the State Board of Education. Marilyn, if you do the honors, please.
Yes, good morning again, everyone. Dr. Cassandra Albrecht is the board's president. She's joining us from Dearborn. Dr. Pamela Pugh, the vice president from Saginaw. Ms. Tiffany Tilly, secretary from Southfield. Mr. Tom McMillan, treasurer from Oakland Township. Dr. Judy Pritchett, Judith Pritchett, NASB delegate, that's the Board's Association. She's also the chair of the Board's Legislative Committee and she resides in Washington Township. Ms. Ellen Cogan-Lipton is chair of the Board's, I'm sorry, Judy was Legislative Committee member. I misspoke. Ellen Cogan-Lipton is chair of the Legislative Committee for the Board. She's from Huntington Woods. And Ms. Nikki Snyder is on the Board's Legislative Committee and she's from Dexter. And Strayhorn is a Legislative Committee member of the Board from Novi. Ms. Brandy Johnson is the governor's policy advisor for education and workforce and she is currently not on the meeting but may join us later. The teacher of the year for this year who has a seat at the board table is Mr. Owen Bondano. He's an English Language Arts teacher at the Oak Park Freshman Institute in Oak Park Schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Marilyn. Next item on the agenda is educational updates related to COVID-19. Board members, it was one year ago today, March 10th, that we had our March Board meeting and that the first two cases of COVID-19 were found in Michigan. One day later, March 11th, Deputy Superintendent Kyle Garant and I went to a meeting at the State Emergency Operations Center. There I saw on the wall the Johns Hopkins Worldwide Coronavirus Map for the first time. I was so struck by the map, which I've looked at online virtually every day in the last year, that I took a picture of it. It noted 127,863 cases and 4,718 deaths worldwide to that date. Absurdly small numbers given where we are today. One day after that, March 12th, the governor closed schools, effective close of business the next day, Michigan schools, like those in most states across the country, were closed to in-person instruction for most or all of the spring. As of yesterday evening, the number of cases worldwide was more than 117 million with the number of deaths at 2.6 million. For the United States, the number of cases was more than 29 million with the number of deaths in excess of 525,000. For Michigan, the number of cases was 598,014 with the number of deaths in excess of 15,600. Yet there are very important positive signs as well. New cases, positivity rates, hospitalization rates due to COVID and deaths due to COVID have all flattened. Mitigation strategies are being observed. Antigen tests are available and in use in many schools. In fewer than three months, more than 2.5 million vaccinations have been administered in the state. According to an MEA survey released one month ago today, nearly two-thirds of those surveyed had been vaccinated or were in the process of being vaccinated against COVID-19. This is a survey of educators produced and finalized by MEA February 9th. More are being vaccinated daily. As the board is aware, by state statute, we collect monthly data on modality of instruction in local school districts. Last month's data indicated that 83% of all districts were offering at least an option of in-person instruction. When this month's data are released, in a week and a half, the percentage will be higher still, a function of increased confidence in the vaccinations, antigen tests, mitigation strategies, and flattened curves. That's not to say we're out of the woods yet. We aren't. We still need to employ our mitigation strategies in school and out. Wear masks, socially distance, wash hands, disinfect regularly, and allow for significant ventilation to the extent possible. I'm proud of the efforts of MDE staff who have produced an enormous amount of COVID-related guidance this year in support of 1.5 million students and a couple hundred thousand staff members in 832 local education agencies and 56 ISDs across the state. I'm also proud of our students, staff, and parents across the state. Let me share three other issues. First, you will hear this morning from Deputy Superintendent Garant on fiscal year 2021 budget supplemental recently approved by the legislature and on the governor's desk. We will also hear from him on the fiscal year 2022 budget. I'll have a few reflections to add after Deputy Superintendent Garant's sharing. Second, you will hear this morning from Chief Deputy Superintendent Sheila Alice, Dr. Paula Daniels, Director of the Office of Educational Supports, and Ms. Sheila Probstill, interim literacy manager in the Office of Educational Supports regarding the second goal of the state's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan to improve early literacy achievement. In the last few months, board, the department has produced a significant report on equity in literacy, worked collaboratively with the Library of Michigan on a compendium of authors of color and their literacy works, sponsored a competition in which educators can nominate African-American authors and their works for inclusion in a Black History Month calendar, held a conference on diversity in literacy, and just yesterday announced the local school district winners of our federal literacy subgrants. Each of these local districts, Benton Harbor, Detroit, Flint, Muskegon Heights, and Pontiac, will receive $3 million over the five-year period and will work closely with MDE to build out their literacy communities as we create a state network of support for them. We're proud of this new work as well. Reading is in part a knowledge of the technical, to be certain, but it is also about joy, about engagement, about identity, about a sense of relevance, and our work of the last few months is an effort to improve what educators do in these important spaces for our young people. Finally, the board is aware that we have a pending request with the U.S. Department of Education for waivers to state summative assessments and related high stakes accountability requirements. Last summer, I urged the state legislature to require national benchmark assessments locally selected. These are assessments that 90% of our districts have chosen to use over the last few years because they provide important information for parents and educators about the reading and math levels of individual students. Additionally, benchmark assessments help determine where to put resources and what interventions and supports are necessary for children. As the board is aware, state summative assessments are not simply required as a function of the federal Every Student Succeeds Act. They are also required by federal law. As such, even if we were to be given waivers by the United States Department of Education, state legislature also needs to waive the assessment requirements for this pandemic year. The board's legislative committee met last week and voted to approve the drafting of a resolution to urge the state legislature to act timely on this effort lest local school districts be required to administer state summative assessments. That resolution is the next item on today's agenda, per the amendment offered and approved by President Albrecht. And I would be remiss if I didn't say before I opened it up for questions that we did open it up for this set of waivers, this request for waivers of the U.S. Department of Education to public comment as we are required to do. We received 298 comments. 285 of them were supportive of our waiver requests. 96% were supportive of our federal waiver requests associated with the state summative assessment in the midst of a pandemic and by extension, the high stakes accountability requirements. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time. Otherwise, we'll move right into the next agenda item. Any questions or comments, fears, phobias, or neuroses? Cannot give it away early in the day. Okay, we will continue with our, we'll continue with our agenda. Next item on the agenda is in fact the discussion and action on the resolution on waivers associated with state summative assessments and high stakes accountability measures in a pandemic for the 2021 academic school year. As I mentioned, the board's legislative committee voted on this last week, voted unanimously to approve the writing of a resolution by staff for consideration of the full state board today regarding urging of the state legislature to waive state summative assessments related high stakes accountability requirements. Marty Ackley, our Director of the Office of Public and Governmental Affairs, will project the draft resolution onto the screen. And while he is doing that, thank you very much, Marty. While he is doing that, I'd like to turn to Ellen Cogan-Lipton, the chairperson of the Board's Legislative Committee. Ms. Lipton, is there anything that you would like to say regarding this resolution before we get a motion on the table, a second, and discussion? Ms. Lipton?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Rice. I just wanted to add that we did have a thorough discussion of this item in the Legislative Committee. It occupied the bulk of the committee meeting, given the time sensitivity of this. And we, as Dr. Rice indicated, we discussed and ultimately unanimously voted on the, bringing this resolution forward to the full board for consideration. And we, we ask for favorable consideration from the full board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. If we could, if someone would be kind enough to read this resolution into the record, I think that that's only fair, given the fact that it was not on the materials that were posted. It having arrived relatively late in the process, we'd like to do the honors.
I can do that.
Thank you.
I know we're having some issues with connectivity, so I'm happy to do that on behalf of the Legislative Committee. So the draft resolution states "Resolution on Waivers Associated with State Summit of Assessments and High Stakes Accountability Measures in a Pandemic for the 2020-2021 Academic School Year." Whereas pre-K-12 students and staff in Michigan and across the country have endured tremendous challenges in the last year due to the COVID-19 pandemic that has gripped the state, nation, and world. Whereas 83% of school districts indicated last month that they were offering at least an in-person option, but given parent choice and the enrollments of many of the districts that have been remote most of the year, fewer than half of Michigan students have received in-person instruction most days this school year. Can you, thank you. Whereas in recognition of this disruption and the public health threats present amidst the pandemic, the U.S. Secretary of Education approved the request of the Michigan Department of Education and other states to waive state summative assessments and high stakes accountability requirements tied to those assessments. Someone needs to mute, please?
Please mute, please mute if you are not speaking.
"Michigan Department of Education and other states to waive state summative assessments and associated high stakes accountability requirements tied to those assessments for the 2019-20 school year." Whereas Michigan's legislature passed and the governor signed a state law last summer to require public school districts to administer locally chosen national benchmark assessments to measure where students are academically at the beginning and end of this school year and for districts to share that information with parents and educators. Whereas the data gathered from those benchmark assessments have helped and will continue to help local school districts focus resources and determine interventions and supports for students. Whereas given the presence of benchmark assessments, schools need to continue focusing as much time as possible on the academic and social emotional needs of their students. Whereas the Michigan Department of Education has a request pending with the U.S. Department of Education to waive the federally required statewide summit of assessments for the 2021 school year and associated high stakes accountability requirements and will continue discussions with the U.S. Department of Education on USED's declared offer of flexibility on such issues. Now therefore be it resolved that contingent upon the granting of these federal waivers, the State Board of Education strongly urges the Michigan Legislature to likewise act to relieve added burden on Michigan students and waive all state laws requiring the administration of statewide summit of assessments and associated high stakes accountability requirements for the 2020-2021 school year. You are on mute, Michael.
I certainly am. That was a gift to, to everyone assembled today. Thank you, President Albrecht. I appreciate that. Mr. Ackley, if you'd be kind enough to keep the resolution before us, if we could have a motion, please. Could someone move the resolution?
So moved.
I have a second?
Support.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion associated therewith. Dr. Pritchett? I believe you got an early reflection in yesterday.
Yes, but I believe Dr. Albrecht is ahead of me right now.
Okay, I beg your pardon. Dr. Albrecht?
And I believe Tom McMillan is ahead of me.
Fair enough. Let me go to the chat so that I know who's, who's where. Mr. McMillan, President Albrecht, Dr. Pritchett, in that order. Let's roll.
Thanks, and sorry I had to call in. My, my screen kept freezing up and it's just issues. So at any rate, I certainly support, you know, in any resolution, the important part of it is to therefore be it resolved. That's kind of the action being taken. I have some concerns about some of the other, some of the wherases, particularly social emotional needs. I talked before about how often, it depends on how you define that phrase, and so it can mean that quite an invasion of privacy of asking students and getting students to indicate all kinds of things that goes on at home and their beliefs and their values and things that the school should have no, no reason to be dealing with. Plus, many, many people try to handle social emotional needs and they're not equipped to and can actually do more damage than good. So, but given that, again, that the be it resolved is really the action item, I certainly will be supportive of this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. President Albrecht, Dr. Pritchett?
Thank you very much. I am 100% supportive of this resolution. I think of all years, it's safe to say that this year is one in which giving a state summative assessment makes absolutely no sense. I know that there are a handful of organizations that believe that these tests somehow provide accountability and transparency through district comparisons, but I would remind us that neither is true if the data is flawed. And these tests, at least this year, cannot be offered to all students appropriately, given the fact that some are still remote, some are in person. You cannot provide these tests remotely and accurately, in which case the data lacks both validity and reliability. So the data will be fundamentally flawed, and yet, if we continue down this road, we will make high stakes decisions, which could include holding children back based on a summative assessment at a time when they are taking these, these tests in extremely challenging circumstances. So benchmarks are a much better offer, a much better use of our time. They provide everything necessary for an assessment during a pandemic. They safeguard the time and attention for both students and educators. They allow for rapid results so that educators can use the results appropriately to help in instruction. They give information to parents so that they understand where their children are and they do so in a timely manner. And it also frees up the time that would be used for test prep to allow for actual instruction and I would say ensuring that children's social emotional well-being and academic growth is a priority as opposed to practicing for a test. So I will be voting yes, and I am 100% supportive. Thank you.
Thank you, President Albrecht. Dr. Pritchett?
Thank you. I certainly echo Dr. Albrecht's comments and, again, that's a ditto on my part. I wanted to offer one slight addition in the first sentence of the resolution. Where it begins, whereas pre-K-12 students, I would like to insert the word parents. And then it would continue, and staff in Michigan. Our parents obviously have been on the front line also, as they always are, very concerned about their children, concerned about their, their future and the type of educational opportunities they have been provided. And so I wanted to be able to make sure that we are acknowledging also their partnership in this because the parents that I have had the opportunity to speak with, again, are saying, please don't make our students take another test in the spring. They're just getting back to quote unquote normalcy, at least in some districts. Some districts are still in remote. Some parents are choosing to keep their children in remote learning and that is absolutely their right. And they should be able to do that and not have to worry about a state assessment that, again, Dr. Albrecht outlined very well. So that's my only, I don't know if I have to offer that as an amendment or whether we can just insert the word.
Dr. Pritchett, we will take it as an, as a, as a motion to amend the base, the base motion. Do I have a second for Dr. Pritchett's motion to amend?
Second.
Do I have a, do I have a second to Dr. Pritchett's motion?
Second by Lipton.
Yes.
There you go. Thank you. So we have a motion and a second for the, the, the small amendment offered by Dr. Pritchett. Any discussion on the, on the amendment? Hearing none. Marilyn, if you would be kind enough to do a roll call vote, please.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Strayhorn?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Unanimous approval.
Okay, so the, the motion to amend has passed. We're back to the base motion. Any more comments or discussion on the base motion? Okay, hearing none. Marilyn, if you'd be kind enough to do another vote. You are, you are certainly getting your, your oar in the water this morning.
Okay, Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Hugh?
Oops, Hugh? Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Snyder?
Yes.
Strayhorn?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Unanimous approval.
Thank you very much. Thank you, board. Just a few notes on what was just approved. What was just approved was not an absence of interest in assessment or accountability. It was an interest in a waiver of state summit It was an interest in a waiver of state summit of assessments and related high-stakes accountability measures in a pandemic. Last summer, I urged the state legislature to require benchmark assessments this year. These are national benchmark assessments given to millions of children across the country. They are regularly used by Michigan districts. Ninety-plus percent of Michigan districts used them last year without a state mandate to do so. As President Albrecht noted, they do provide data for educators and for parents to know where children are and to help target resources, to help focus on interventions and help focus on supports for our children. They will be administered at the end of the year, as they were at the beginning of the year. The administration of state summit of assessments, in addition to these, would be an extraordinary time sink at a moment when children are increasingly coming back to school and when the focus ought to be on their social emotional and their academic needs and growth. Moreover, people should be aware that we are going to be able to get more benchmark assessment data than we would state summative data, if only because the benchmark assessments are able to be given in multiple venues. The same is not true for state summit of assessments, which have to be given with very, very strict protocols. So I appreciate very much your vote today. We will convey that vote to the state legislature. You should know, Board, that we will be meeting with the U.S. Department of Education again this week on this issue to press our case that state summit of assessments in a pandemic do not serve children. In fact, they undermine the time that they would otherwise have for work on the academics, for work on the social and emotional. So, again, thank you very much for your leadership and your support on this particular resolution.
Dr. Rice?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just wanted to make it clear that no one contacted requesting public comment on that item.
Okay, thank you very much. And just a note that Owen Bondano wrote in the chat, "Thank you from Michigan teachers." That's a lot of thank yous, Owen, but we'll take them. Thank you. The next agenda item is the update on supplemental for fiscal year 2021 and budget for fiscal year 2022. During this presentation, information will be shared on the budget supplemental for this fiscal year and the budget for fiscal year 2022. This is an informational presentation. It does not require Board action. Our presenter is Mr. Kyle Garant, Deputy Superintendent for Finance and Operations. Mr. Garant, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, sharing my screen with everyone here. All right, good morning, Board, and thank you for the opportunity to provide a quick update on the supplemental budget for fiscal year 21 and some brief highlights of the budget for the Governor's proposal for fiscal year 2022. First, we'll start with the fiscal year 21 supplemental. In the next six or seven slides, you'll see this kind of comparison grid for both what the executive supplemental request or what the Governor proposed, and then House Bill 4048 Sub 1 is what the legislature ultimately passed and presented to the Governor yesterday. So both the Governor's supplemental request and the legislative adopted House Bill 4048 authorizes the nearly $1.5 billion in federal SRT2 fund formula dollars. These dollars represent the 90% of SRT2 funds the federal law requires be allocated to districts based on the Title I Part A allocations. The legislative proposal tie bars half of those dollars to House Bill 4049. House Bill 4049 would revise the Public Health Code to restrict the Director of Health, of the Department of Health and Human Services, from closing a public or non-public school to in-person instruction and would instead permit local health officers to make those decisions. In this case, a tie bar means that half of the dollars would go to districts now, and the other half are only allocated to districts if House Bill 4049 becomes law. On the next slide, just a quick review of what the SRT2 monies are. They're federal funds included in the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations, or CARISA Act, that was passed by Congress and signed into law by President Trump back in December. District allocations for that 90% of that fund, those funds are based on the Title I Part A formula, which results in an uneven distribution of those dollars. These dollars are one-time and non-recurring in nature, meaning they will not be ongoing funding for districts. Over the weekend, you may have heard, and over the last couple weeks, actually, additional congressional negotiations around a new relief package that was approved by the Senate over this past weekend and would need to head back to the House for a vote before ultimately heading to President Biden's desk. The next two slides give a little more context to SRT2 formula allocations. This graph compares district SRT2 allocations to a district's fiscal year 2020 budget expenditures, so what districts actually spent last year. 90% of districts will receive at least 2.5%, at least a 2.5% increase as compared to their fiscal year 20 current operating expenditures. 41% of districts will receive at least a 10% increase as compared to their FY20 current operating expenditures, and you can see where that blue line intersects the 10% line in between the 300 and 400 number of districts there in the graph. The bottom 5% of districts will receive 1.6% or less as compared to their FY20 current operating expenditure. So, again, you see this kind of unevenness play out visually because of the basis of the Title I Part A formula being the basis for these SRT allocations. To that point, the graph helps, this graph helps to illustrate the unevenness of those SRT2 formula allocations. These three bars equal 215 school districts who will receive less than a $450 per people increase in their SRT2 formula allocation, and it's these districts, Board, that require supplementation from either the 10% SRT2 discretionary money or state funding. The House bill, again, that was used as a vehicle for the legislatively-approved supplemental presented to the Governor yesterday, allocates $136 million in School Aid Fund to do exactly that. This bill requires a district receiving funds to offer 20 hours of in-person instruction per week to all students by March 22nd, and will also require those districts to submit a spending plan to MDE within 45 days of the bill's effective date. So these 215 school districts will receive this per pupil equalization payment to get up to the minimum of $450 per pupil as an increase, which is, on average, approximately a 5% increase for the typical district in the state. Moving on to the SRT2 discretionary fund, so, Board, this is the 10% of money that is not required to be allocated through the Title I A formula. The Governor's original proposal combined that $157.4 million in SRT2 discretionary money with $300 million in School Aid Fund to provide dollars to districts and ISDs for the same broad range of COVID response activities described in the SRT2 law, which we've mentioned and shared with the Board before, is 15 broad categories that districts can spend these dollars within. The legislatively-adopted proposal allocates the majority of these SRT2 discretionary funds for what's deemed COVID-19 remediation services, for high school credit recovery, in-person K-8 summer programming, and in-person before and after-school programs. Unlike this spring, when SRT1 funding utilized an equitable services model to provide support to non-public schools, the SRT2 money dollars had, the SRT2 money through GEAR has provided a specific allocation to support non-public schools and are separate and distinct from the monies allocated to public schools and SRT2 monies. Both the Governor and legislative proposal authorizes the full $86.8 million in federal Governor's Emergency Education Relief, or GEAR Fund, dollars for the Emergency Assistance to NonPublic Schools program. As you may recall, the CARISA Act approved by Congress and signed by the President back in December also included $292.1 million for childcare. The Governor's supplemental request includes these funds and targets them to boost eligibility, boost provider reimbursement rates, and pays for the family contribution. None of these federal funds are included in what the legislature approved and provided to the Governor yesterday. All of these funds will need to be allocated by the legislature at some point. Board, as you may recall, even though the feds give us these funds, the legislature still must appropriate it for us to be able to expend these dollars. And finally, a couple of additional highlights of additional appropriations that was included in the legislatively-adopted proposal. There's $21.3 million in payments for teachers and school staff who provide services for a K-8 summer program or a high school credit recovery program. The bill also increases the allocation for Section 31N by $20 million. You may recall, Board, that the Superintendent, in recent testimony, recommended a doubling of Section 31N, children's mental health funding. You may recall that the funding, that this funding grew from $30 million to $35.6 million for the current fiscal year. Thus, a doubling would have taken it up another $35.6 million. So while not a complete doubling, what we've been, the Superintendent and the Department have been advocating for, this would be a healthy increase. And finally, the legislative adopted proposal includes $11.7 million to support implementation of benchmark assessments for the 21, for the 21-22 school year. And as you may recall, Board, there used to be a direct line item to support districts to do this work, but it's been two full fiscal years since we have supported districts financially to provide benchmark assessments. So I just presented to you was the supplemental proposal, again, that was presented from the legislature to the Governor yesterday afternoon for consideration. Now I want to talk with you briefly, Board, about the Governor's FY22 budget proposal that was presented to the legislature last month. The paradox this year, Board, is that unlike other years in recent memory, there is more new money in the fiscal year 21 supplemental than there is in the coming FY22 budget due to the significant amount of federal funds flowing to the state. As I mentioned earlier, these dollars are uneven and nonrecurring. So the Governor's FY22 budget proposal includes a foundation, an increase in the foundational allowance payments, 100 to be provided through the 2X formula, would be a $164 increase to the minimum foundational allowance districts in '82 for the high end. Funding for public school academies that are cyber schools is recommended at 80% of the minimum foundational allowance, which would equate to an estimated $30.2 million in cost savings. A total of $14.1 million increase, or a 2% increase, in each of the following categories in the economically disadvantage of 31A line, English language learners, special education cost reimbursement, and small and rural isolated districts. These type of investments help to move the needle in meeting our top 10 strategic education plan goal to provide adequate and equitable school funding. The FY22 budget proposal also includes additional funding of $200 million to pay districts for 70 lost people in fiscal year 21 and fiscal year 22. So if a district, for instance, loses 100 pupils between this year and next year, the district would reimburse for 70 of those lost pupils. A couple of quick highlights of the fiscal year 22 budget that's included in the Department budget, so the previous two slides that I showed and discussed were monies that were in school aid. These dollars are appropriated in the Department's budget. There's a $78 million increase in general fund, excuse me, a $78 million general fund investment for childcare, which would be coupled with the $292 million in federal childcare money, as I mentioned earlier, to support the boost in eligibility, the boost in provider rate reimbursements, and to pay for the family contribution. The executive recommendation also includes a just shy of a $2.9 million general fund investment for educator shortage. This investment would focus on three key pieces: supporting our future promising educator programs, incentivize these educators back into the profession by helping to support paying certificate renewal fees, and to support our fast-track endorsement efforts to assist certified teachers to earn new endorsements in areas of high-demand critical shortage. With that, I'd like to say thank you to my team in the Office of Financial Management and our partners at the State Budget Office and the House and the fiscal agencies for helping to provide some of the data incorporated into this PowerPoint, and I will turn it back over to Dr. Rice. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Superintendent Garant. That was a very rich presentation. No pun intended. Board members, questions or comments for Mr. Garant? Mr. Lipton?
The question I have is related to the tie bar. Don't quote me on this, but I thought that you could not tie bar budget bills, particularly when they are coupled with a policy proposal. Now, I understand that this was sort of cloaked in terms of, it's sort of a quasi-policy, quasi-spending, so holding back half if you go back to school by a certain date, but my recollection, when I served on appropriations, is that those types of tie bars are somewhat specious. So is there any, was there any thought about challenging that type of a tie bar?
Mr. Garant?
Yeah, I saw Brandy turn her camera on, and she kind of opened her mouth, so I thought maybe she might want to say something.
I'll tell you what, we would be happy to defer to Brandy Johnson from the Governor's office if she would like to take that question.
Yeah, we are absolutely reviewing the enforceability and constitutionality of several provisions of this package, and I actually think... And I actually think that we will be in this meeting when you hear more about, about these bills.
Great, thank you.
But there's several, I think there's several questions, there's several questions related to constitutionality and enforceability and throughout these bills that we are, will continue to review.
That was my recollection when I served on appropriations.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Lipton is, as well. The issue, Ms. Lipton, that you raise is, I just want to be clear, I don't want to lose what Ms. Johnson said. It is one of a number of questions that are being explored, and we ourselves raised some questions regarding the budget as approved by the, by the legislature. So we look forward to, to hearing more. Thank you, Ms. Johnson, thank you, Ms. Lipton. Dr. Pugh, Dr. Pritchett, in that order.
Along the lines of the previous question, I guess I would want to hear a little bit more about the stipulation about the twenty, was it twenty hour? I didn't hear what, I didn't get a chance to catch that, Kyle, but it was twenty hours, twenty-something of in-person learning that was tied to some of the funding? If you could clarify that, and what does that mean?
Yep, so the, the districts that, the per pupil equalization payment that the legislative proposal provides to districts that are receiving four hundred and fifty dollars per pupil or less of an increase in their S R two monies, which equates to two hundred and fifteen districts. In order to receive those payments, those districts would have to provide twenty hours, at least twenty hours of in-person instruction per week to also, they have to offer it, excuse me, they have to offer it to all students by March twenty-second. And it also requires that those districts would submit a spending plan to M D E within a certain timeframe, have to receive those monies.
I mean, that twenty hours per week by March twenty-second, has that forced some schools to open their doors? Are, are schools already operating under this stipulation, and are people choosing this over public health?
Could I, could I take that question, and I'm happy to have others chime in, Mr. Garant, Ms. Johnson? I, I think the answer to this question is no. Whether it changes behavior moving forward is an interesting question. If it were to survive a governor's veto, it is interesting to see whether, to reflect upon whether it would change behavior. I don't think it has changed behavior yet for a few reasons. One, so much of what is going on at the moment, March ninth in public schools, was uninformed by the state legislature's work on this budget. So what I mean by that is, is that they've made decisions over the last several months without the benefit of knowing what the state legislature was going to do in this, in this budget supplemental. So it's hard to imagine that much has changed based on the budget supplemental. Now, I take the question one step further. Is it possible that it could change behavior if it weren't subject to a veto? I think the answer to that is yes, it could change. We have, we have issues with this language for a couple of reasons. And then I defer to, to Brandy representing the, the governor's office to, to share additional reflections. And then back to Mr. Garant.
I don't have additional thoughts. Because this is tied to federal money that is extra, it's not being tied to, say, the base foundation formula. It is probably, it probably passes, passes more legal muster or constitutional muster. So I, I do, I think it will be challenging to enforce. That's, I think Superintendent Rice and I agree that it will be challenging, it will be challenging to enforce.
I think we, we probably have three or four different opinions on the line that all get to the same conclusion, albeit by different routes. This, this language was not tightly drawn. And Dr. Pugh, if I, if I understand correctly from our many conversations over the last year, you have concerns about this being coercive, in a sense, and putting public, public education over public health. Our concern, we believe that there should be an offer of in-person instruction. What parents choose is a different story. It should be with substantial mitigation strategies. Children should be, should be safe, our educators as well. Our concern is, is that this is mind's eye language. It is not clear language, and it, it will lead to multiple interpretations of the, of the same, of the same statute. Mr. Garant, do you have anything more to add to what is already more?
No, I do not, thank you.
And let me just, let me correct something, because I'm sure you probably, I, I don't think you meant to say this, but my, my argument is not at all public education over public health. It is, you know, people surviving, people living while we look at an alternative way to educate our children. I believe that there has been so much emphasis and so much push to put children inside of buildings, put people, put children in, in conditions that could, that risked them of being exposed, and for our black and brown and indigenous and children of color, that is far more likely. There was a report that came out of Michigan Advance that talked about fourteen, when we talked about our, our partnership districts, you know, those districts where children are more likely to be out of school, but, you know, can we make sure we get six feet of distance? Do we have the number of teachers that can be there? These are districts that the data shows, bodies show, death certificates show, that they've been hit harder. They're more likely to have underlying illnesses. If we look at the data and we look at the multi-system inflammatory, multi-inflammatory syndrome data, we know that those children are more likely to be hit hardest. And if there's anything that's coercing or influencing them to be put in these conditions where they already have underlying issues, and there's so many other factors that go into play here, I, I'm greatly concerned with that because we do have alternative ways of educating our children. Education is important, but their survival, the teacher's survival, the parent's survivals, our community's survival is important, and that's coercive. And I do appreciate some of the conversations that we're having now that help us to better prepare our children, the, the environments. But some of these conversations that we've been having to push children into schools has not been about education. You know, it's been about getting things back to, the economy back into, into play. And so I, I just want to put that out there. So for me, it's not public education versus public health, it's making sure that our families and children and teachers survive, and, and looking at different ways that we educate our children. We all want our children to be educated. And then my only other question would be around the Title I that, that would come with the new dollars. Do we see that there could be, and I, I'm not sure if this was in the presentation, but is there a way for us to, I don't want to say us, can that be altered once the funding gets here? And I don't know, maybe that was a part of your presentation, but it, I'm not sure in, in the rescue plan that was just, hopefully will be signed this week, if it's still the formula of funding that would, that would be used as Title I? And if it is, can it be changed when it gets here to, to Michigan?
Yeah, and Mr. Garant, I'll, I'll let you, I'll let you take that, we'll go back to the technical. Ninety percent versus ten percent of the Title I funding?
Yes, so Dr. Pugh, that, that can't be changed once it's here, so for the current S R two monies, that, the specification of that Title I Part A formula is specified in federal law, so we must allocate ninety percent of what we're awarded by using that Title I Part A formula. And the reporting I've seen thus far on the proposed new package outlines that the monies would come to states in a very similar way as the previous two rounds, so of the S R one and S R two dollars. So my assumption at this point, having not seen anything different, is that it will take, it will use the Title I A Part Formula again as a method for distributing those ninety, you know, some percentage, in the last two cases, ninety percent of those dollars through that formula.
Dr. Pugh, was your question about the, the S R two dollars in the package that was signed by the president in late December, or is it about the, the legislation that the U.S. Senate just passed and that the U.S. House is, is going to pass? Dr. Pugh? Did we lose you?
She's not showing up on my screen anymore.
Okay, nor, nor on, nor on mine as either. With respect to the S R two dollars, ninety percent are by formula, Title I Part A, ten percent are discretionary within the state. Dr. Pritchett, to you.
Thank you, and I really think Kyle has answered the question. My, my question too was around this one hundred and thirty-six million additional equalization money. I read this, and, and, you know, it's all in the semantics, as a district would have to offer twenty hours of in-person instruction. You clarified a little bit ago that that is K twelve, because what I wondered is, could a district offer it, for example, just at the elementary level, and still do either hybrid or remote at the secondary level, which some districts have chosen to do for various reasons? But what I thought I heard you say several minutes ago in your response is, it has to be offered at all levels of the district. So that was my question.
Yeah, that's correct. The language says that it needs to be offered to all students.
Right, that, that in and of itself has a lot of nuance. I mean, as a longtime educator, you can take a look at this language and realize that it, it is kaleidoscopic language, and by extension, a challenge. Other questions or comments from board members? Questions or comments? Yes?
I would, and I'm realizing my camera is flipped down, oh goodness. Hi, can you, can you see me?
Not yet. There you go, there you go, you're in.
Sorry, I realized someone put the camera down that used it last. I can't reach my chat anyhow, so I'll, I'll text Marilyn about that. I just want to add some comment on to Pam's sharing about public ed over public health. I just really, I want to challenge that narrative because, you know, if you really go at it from a public health perspective, from a student's perspective, if we really brought in students and tried to understand where they're coming from and what they're dealing with, and then we really balance that against the data that's available, we might see what the hundreds of doctors and mental health professionals said last month in their urging to get kids back into school, that it really is better for their health to be back in school. One of my biggest passions right now, and it's very much experiential in terms of what I'm hearing from people and what other people are experiencing on behalf of all kids, is kids are dying. They are dying right now of suicide. To ask a child, a student, to sit inside their home in front of a computer every day, all day long, we have to be sure that the risks of that to their mental health, and I have to believe that this is something that board members that are very concerned about social emotional learning, understand. Hundreds of professionals last month told us, you know what? The risks of that are not outweighing the benefits of these kids being back in school around other kids, learning with other kids. This isn't a coercive tactic to keep people in a building when it isn't better for their health. We've been going at this since last March. I just don't want that narrative to go unchallenged, to the extent that we really do acknowledge the students that have lost their lives to suicide during this pandemic. And I don't see it getting better unless we acknowledge that mental health is a huge byproduct of what we're asking students to go through. And that's, that's all I'll say for now.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Dr. Pugh, welcome back. Ms. Lipton, to you.
Yes, I, I just wanted to comment that, you know, reasonable minds can differ, and they always do during the legislative appropriations process. I just, when I, when I asked my initial question, I just wanted to alert people that there are certain rules in terms of how you can legally appropriate money. And legislature is oftentimes trying to, oftentimes use the appropriations process to make policy. And although there's some wiggle room, the, the laws and our constitution provides a framework within which that can be done. And my, my sense is that this is, this is challengeable, and that was, that was, I think, the purpose of the discussion. And just to everyone's point in terms of where we, where we fall down on public health versus public education, again, reasonable minds can differ, but the legislature does have a lot of authority to deal with all of these issues. So to a board member Snyder's point in terms of increased suicide, what have you, certainly the very, in my mind, elegant and far less constitutionally specious way to do that, of course, would be to join the board in our, in our push to increase the number of guidance counselors, school nurses, school social workers, what have you, and again, drive resources to where they're needed and to where we know, research and data tells us, we get the most bang for our buck by actually placing these public health professionals, counselors, whatever, in the schools to actually assist children. So, again, that was just a, a comment, but, but just to remind the board that there are ways in which the legislature can in fact move the needle, in my mind, in a much more productive way, and that would be to, to increase the amount of dollars that we spend in schools providing these types of mental health professionals. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Dr. Pugh, back to you.
Can you all hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry about that. And to, you know, to Ellen's last words, I, I couldn't say that any better myself, that yes, there does need to be funding in those areas, and those are areas that we've long cried out for, for some of these communities that we're talking about. And to Nikki, to Nikki's point, yes, we definitely have been concerned about whether children would eat, whether children's mental and social and emotional well-being could uphold through this pandemic, because not only are they at home, but in, in an environment that, that we know is, is probably less conducive. We know as, children need to be nurtured by educators with their friends, that's a better environment for them, but they're also seeing lives lost, they're also seeing life change before them on so many up front, and this is why we want And this is why we wanted um all the measures that the governor was pushing for in the beginning to be put in place so that we could uh address and get over this um illness sooner rather than later. And because of some of the things that we've rushed, unfortunately, we're at this place where we're still wondering if we're doing enough to get through uh this virus quick enough. Um, and I do want to say, as a black African-American woman, I just want the data that we talk about to be generalizable to our children, to our communities. Um, and I don't see that all the time. I don't see that when we're speaking, we're talking about the decades of neglect in these communities, whether we're talking about things that have driven the health inequities to begin with, or whether we're talking about the buildings uh conditions that have been left deplorable, whether we're talking about the educators who have been demoralized. We're not generalizing to those communities that have been hit hardest by this disease, and that's all I beg of, is that when we have these conversations, we're talking about how do we address these communities and these uh children that make up about eighteen percent of the population, well, black, but we could add, when we add on um our Hispanic uh children, our Latino uh children and others, you know, that that goes up more, but they're, they have been the hardest hit by this and have for decades. Uh, the conditions have been left for them to be hardest hit, and if we go about this, um, just generalizing, uh, it will continue to see uh um these health conditions and and the gaps only only widen. And so that's all I ask of, and I am concerned about their mental health and but I am concerned about policymakers and others um who do not always take into consideration that there are differences.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Um, other board members, comments, questions, reflections? While you're thinking about that, I would like to underscore one thing Mr. Garant said. He talked about some of the differences between the fiscal year 2021 supplemental, the fiscal year 22 budget. And he noted that there was a flip-flop over most years, that typically the changes in budget supplementals are very small, um, that the changes in budgets are quite large. That's very different this year. You've got two billion new dollars in the fiscal year 2021 budget supplemental, about a half billion new dollars in the fiscal year 2022 budget, but they are very different dollars. The two billion new dollars in fiscal year 2021 are primarily, not exclusively, as Mr. Garant noted, but primarily federal. They are primarily non-recurring. They are primarily lumpily distributed. They can be spent through September thirtieth, 2023. So for some districts that are going to get a great deal of money, those districts will be able to fold those dollars over for two years. For other districts, they will be helpful for one year. For still other districts, they won't be very much helpful at all because they are so minimal, which is why they needed to be supplemented, um, noted in both the governor's budget and then by extension, the House and the the Senate's versions of the supplemental. The fiscal year 22 money is one quarter the amount. It is recurring, however. It is state-funded, however, and it is largely, not exclusively, but largely done in an even distribution. There are some exceptions associated therewith. The governor has put in place uh dollars to help drive weighted funding in particular areas, dollars for um economically disadvantaged children, children with special needs, English learners, but primarily, you have a quarter the dollars in 2022 new that you have in 2021 in the supplemental. It is a very, very unusual circumstance. Local school districts, in many, 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 many cases, are going to benefit from, on a short-term basis, non-recurring dollars that has potential ramifications for service delivery as we come out of a pandemic and we reflect upon how to serve children and families and staff post-pandemic. That is an important financial issue. We will be talking about it more, but the issue of adequate and equitable school funding gets somewhat obscured, given this large infusion of federal dollars. It is a large infusion, yes, but it is non-recurring. We certainly are uh grateful for and appreciative of these dollars, but the but these federal dollars ought not to be considered to be a panacea. They are support in the short run. They are not a rectification of inadequate and inequitable school funding, which is endemic in the state of Michigan and has been in the Proposal A era in the last quarter of a century. So I didn't want to lose that point because I think it's an important point. There will be people that say, oh, well, you know, we're largely covered now for a minute. Be under no illusions about the adequacy of these dollars on an enduring basis. There is no such adequacy. The federal non-recurring dollars do not correct for an endemic, an endemically inadequate and inequitable school funding formula. So I just wanted to be clear about that, and I'm not not laying that at the doorstep of any one person or people. It's not my point. It's simply a math issue, straight math. Dr. Pugh, I believe, back to you.
Yeah, and and Kyle, I'm so sorry. Where where we left off for the Title I, it sounded like you were saying that that Title I is the formula that was still left in the rescue, American Rescue Plan, and when it gets to the states, then that formula holds. It it can't be changed by by our state legislature. Okay, there was some other questions that you said, the cost savings for virtual. Um, I can't remember exactly why I put that down here, but I have cost savings for virtual. I guess if you could just say a little bit more about that. And then what do we mean by lost students, the seventy percent um for lost students?
Sure, so the 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 piece on the on the um the cyber schools um has been something that has been in uh both uh Snyder era and now Governor Whitmer era budgets around uh proposing a reduction in the base minimum foundation allowance for cyber schools to take into account essentially that there's less um operating expenditures um for cyber-only schools than there are for traditional brick-and-mortar schools. So that that's what um that piece is. And then um the uh me and my my use of language was not the best, but for the lost pupils. So for that enrollment stability, um, essentially, the governor is proposing to um uh provide two hundred million dollars uh to support districts to uh smoothen out or flatten any enrollment volatility that would take place between uh this current school year and next year. So if the district, um, again, if their fall count day was a hundred pupils less in twenty-two than in twenty-one, um, they would get reimbursed for seventy of those students. So again, they're trying to, the goal is to uh smoothen or um uh lessen the amount of any enrollment volatility that might take place within districts as we move um into next school year.
Okay, so then this would be to 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 Dr. Rice's point, the lost students applies to COVID funding, so it's more of the short term. The cost savings that you said would be realized as a result of uh the virtual schools um correcting that cost, that's more long, that's long-term, that's in the the actual budget.
That's, yeah, that's for, that's a proposal in the twenty-two budget, yes.
Okay, okay.
Please, no, go ahead, Dr. Pugh. I'm sorry I interrupted.
I think I got all my questions. You wanted to say more about that. The only thing that I would say, uh, also to your point, Dr. Rice, is the infusion of funds that are coming in, you know, just wanting to know what kind of guidance would be coming with that, especially as it relates to the funding that will come in through the newest, that that through the the bill that will be passed uh this week.
Yeah, we we're gonna have to see what kind of guidance we get from the U.S. Department of Education on on those funds. Um, you know, the reality is, is that um we're still working on the second major chunk, this S R two chunk. Um, S R three is is uh quite quite a ways, um, quite a ways from being out the door. I would like to just clarify that. Um, what Mr. Garant has put forward and what we've been discussing on the the twenty-twenty-one supplemental is on the governor's desk for disposition, and um just as she proposes a budget and the legislature disposes of the budget, so too um does the legislature put forward a budget to her approved, and then she she gets to act on it. And uh, you know, that's um uh that's for uh the the near future. So I I share that um with you because sometimes when we talk about this, it it may seem a little bit more concretized than it actually uh than it actually is. The other thing I want to make clear, while we appreciate the FY twenty-two budget proposal of the governor, um, it is not the adequate and equitable school funding formula um that we would like in the state, nor can it be with the current revenue base. So I just want to be clear um about that, not a swipe, just a just a reflection. And now back to you, Dr. Pugh, said Dr. Seuss.
Just one more, uh, I think just one more question. Um, well, let me just, a statement first, and I think that 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 uh is what gives me just a little bit of hope with the Title I that's placed, uh, formula that's placed in the in the uh the act that would that will be passed, um, because, you know, we're still fighting this issue about around equitable education, so that gives a little bit of infusion there. But my question um is, what do we think is the timeline for the supplemental? I don't know.
You you talk about the governor's action on the supplemental?
Mm-hmm.
Um, we we would expect soon, if Ms. Johnson has any um greater um greater information on that, that she'd care to share, I'm I'm happy to have her do that, but if if soon is as good as we get, that's fine, too.
And and while you're talking, Brandy, too, you know, if you want to talk a little bit about the actual budget itself, um, the upcoming budget, the timeline around that.
Yeah, that one's more aspirational. Um, don't have a good sense of the the FY twenty-two budget um timing uh suppl- or timing. Um, I know we always strive to have budget, um, school budgets done by June. Um, we have yet to hit that goal in this administration, um, and it's in in divided government, it it's just a little bit more challenging and negotiations take uh longer. All that said, we do recognize the the need for certainty um among among school leaders, both K twelve and and higher ed. So I don't have much insight on that. In um in terms of uh the supplemental, I think it um uh will, you'll hear about it during this meeting. So uh in the next, you know, two hours and three minutes or so, um, is our target um for for announcing um the governor's actions on the the supplemental that's on her desk.
Okay, well, we at some point, if you could give us more precision than that, that would be great.
Yeah, right after lunch, I think that um I'll be able to um walk it through it, and it will, you know, it it's, it will be pretty um easy to explain.
Yeah, we appreciate um, we appreciate you sharing that. Um, other board questions, comments, concerns, reflections? Going once, twice, thrice, hearing none. Mr. Garant, thank you. Ms. Johnson, thank you. Board members, thank you as well. We are, uh, we are now pivoting to the next agenda item. It's the presentation on Top Ten Strategic Education Plan, the Goal to Improve Early Literacy Achievement. Board members, you know this uh as board goal or as a state strategic education plan goal number two. This monthly presentation will highlight the goal to improve literacy achievement. It will include data associated with the goal. Following the presentation, we will engage in further conversation with the board about the efforts to improve literacy achievement in Michigan. This is an informational presentation. It does not require board action. Our presenters are Ms. Sheila Alice, Chief Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Paula Daniels, Director of the Office of Educational Support, and Ms. Shelley Probstel, Interim Literacy Manager. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Uh, our presenters, welcome to you.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Good morning, everyone. Today's Top Ten Strategic Education Plan presentation is the sixth in a series on the goals and metrics included in Michigan's Strategic Education Plan. Today's presentation format will follow the format of previous Top Ten presentations. We're going to begin with a review of the metrics, followed by sharing some of the key efforts at M D E to achieve the goal. Um, as Dr. Rice mentioned, I'm pleased to have Dr. Paula Daniels uh and Mrs. Shelley Probstel um join me in the presentation this morning, and we appreciate the opportunity to continue the series of presentations to the State Board of Education. The eight goals in Michigan's Strategic Education Plan are listed on this slide. As Dr. Rice mentioned, today's presentation will focus on the second goal, Improve Early Literacy Achievement. Within the Top Ten Strategic Education Plan, the metrics selected for this goal include the percent of students who are proficient on the third-grade M-Step, our State Summit of Assessment for English Language Arts, or ELA, the fourth-grade National Assessment of Educational Progress, or NAP, um, for reading, and the third-grade Benchmark Assessments for ELA. Today, we will present data on the percent proficient on two of the three assessments, M-Step and NAP. We're not able to present Benchmark Assessment data for third-grade ELA at this time, um, because our districts are administering these assessments to their students this spring. Following the data presentation, we will share with you some of the many literacy efforts which M D E and others are leading that are having a positive influence on this goal to improve early literacy achievement. A preview of some of these literacy efforts were shared during the State Board of Education meeting last month. And so now I would like to introduce Ms. Shelley Probstel, Interim Literacy Manager for the department, to begin the segment of the presentation on proficiency data. Mrs. Probstel.
Thank you, Sheila. Since the initial administration of the M-Step in 2015, these assessments have undergone multiple revisions in order to reduce testing time. These revisions make it difficult to make reliable data comparisons or interpret long-term data trends. For this reason, we are presenting M-Step percent proficient for all students in third grade for 2018 and 2019. Looking at the data change between these two years, there was a one-year percentage point increase of point seven. We have no data to share for 2020 because the state received a federal waiver for this assessment. On this slide, you will see percent proficient in fourth-grade reading on the National Assessment for Educational Progress, or NAP. NAP is administered every other year, so we're presenting data for 2015, 2017, and 2019. Looking at the percent proficient in fourth-grade reading for all students, there was a four-year percentage point increase of three points. Michigan's national ranking went from forty-first in 2015 to thirty-fifth in 2017 and thirty-second in 2019. Our ranking improved over the last two administrative cycles. The last metric we would present on is third-grade benchmark data. As Sheila mentioned, we do not have data to present on this metric because local education agencies are administering the benchmark assessments in the spring. As the board recalls, benchmark assessments are state-mandated and require fall and spring student administration for the current school year. This is a new test administration requirement for this year. This is a new test administration requirement for this year. This concludes the data portion of our presentation. Next, we will focus on the most recent efforts to improve early literacy achievement. And to share the next segment of our presentation, I'll turn it over to Dr. Paula Daniels.
Thank you, Shelley, and greetings, everyone. The first effort I'm going to highlight with you this morning is the Equity and Literacy Guidance Document that was released this past January and is available on the M D E literacy webpage. The Michigan Department of Education developed this comprehensive guidance for all Michigan districts to ensure that all students have access to high-quality literacy instruction for every child in every classroom every day. There are five sections to the document. The first section in the document is Practices for Creating Engaging Literacy Learning Environments. It covers specific practices for creating engaging literacy learning environments, increasing diverse texts, using culturally responsive teaching practices, and developing a purpose for students to be engaged in literacy. The second section, The Daily Involvement of Students in Literacy, addresses reading and writing that takes place both in the classroom and outside of the school day. This includes reading and writing at home, after school, and during the summer months, as well as time for support in reading that sometimes takes place in addition to core classroom literacy instruction. The third section, The Scientific or Technical Aspects of Literacy Instruction, provides educators with the learning progressions and literacy learning components needed to fully support literacy learning. It is essential that educators have a deep knowledge of how students learn to read and write and how to continue developing those skills. This section also provides suggestions on how to support students who may be struggling with their literacy development. The fourth section, The Role of Family Engagement, offers concrete examples for ways educators can create two-way communications with families, provide guidance to families about literacy learning, and truly engage parents as decision-making partners to support literacy. The last section is Resources to Support Equity in Literacy, which includes three appendices. First is Celebrating Authors of Color and Their Works of Literature, which is a list of suggested authors of color and their literary works for educators to explore. The list is organized by grade band. Next is Resources to Support Equity in Literacy, which includes online tools, information, research, and webpages to support the content of the guidance document. And finally, there is Equity Training Opportunities and Resources. This includes online connections to training opportunities, technical assistance centers for educators to use as they deepen their equitable practices in literacy instruction. Our next major effort is the Michigan Comprehensive Literacy State Development Grant. On October 1st, 2020, the Michigan Department of Education was awarded the Comprehensive Literacy State Development Grant. This is a five-year, $16 million grant awarded by the United States Department of Education. Michigan was one of 11 states awarded this grant. M D E selected five local agencies who serve a specific population using a competitive grant application process. This target population includes a large number of students with low threat, low third-grade literacy achievement, students who are economically disadvantaged, students with disabilities, and English learners. The department's literacy team will support LEAs through a collaborative learning network to advance literacy skills, including pre-literacy skills and reading and writing in children and students from birth to grade 12. This network will aim to improve outcomes for all students and reduce disparities for underrepresented groups of students, including those who are economically disadvantaged, English learners, and students with disabilities. The following districts have been selected. The Benton Harbor Area Schools, the Detroit Public Schools Community District, the Flint Community Schools, the Muskegon Heights Public School Academy System, and the Pontiac School District. And now to share additional literacy efforts, I'll turn it back to Shelley.
Thank you, Paula. Moving on to another major effort, on February 25th, M D E hosted a virtual conference titled Building Mirrors and Windows: Children Seeing Themselves and Others in the Literature That We Teach. More than 1,900 educators registered for this F R I A conference. The conference was recorded and will soon be available on the M D E literacy webpage. The keynote speaker was Dr. Goldie Mohammed, author of the book Cultivating Genius. She presented on the history and purpose of classroom libraries, provided guidance on examining classroom resources for biases, and discussed the importance of including diverse texts to aid in instructional practices. Her message was inspiring and her suggestions to educators were actionable. Following the keynote presentation, participants chose one of three breakout sessions with an elementary, secondary, or administration focus. The sessions were led by teams of Michigan educators who have shared their personal experience and practical advice for increasing student engagement by increasing the number of diverse texts used in classroom and made available for individual student reading. The conference was a tremendous success and inspiring for all of those who attended. The last major literacy initiative to share with you occurred last month, which was to celebrate African-American History Month. Today, we are providing a brief recap of the more extensive presentation given on this topic during last month's State Board of Education meeting. As we shared last month, each week in February, a week-long calendar of African-American authors and their works of literature were mailed to educators. There were 28 authors, and their literary works were nominated by educators who shared how they used the literary works with their students. The four weekly calendars continue to be available on the department's literacy webpage. The February calendars are part of an effort to continue supporting educators in increasing the amount of diverse texts used for instruction with students and made available for individual student reading. As we have shared, diverse texts improve student engagement because students are able to see themselves, mirrors, and others' windows, and enter the world presented in the literature sliding glass doors. In addition to the four most recent literacy initiatives that I just shared with you, there are many additional literacy efforts that have been ongoing, some of which I will share with you now. The first is M D E's continued leadership with the Essential Instructional Literacy Practices that were developed by the Michigan Association of Intermediate School Administrators, General Education Leadership Network, and the Early Literacy Task Force. The Literacy Essentials are free documents designed for Michigan educators to improve literacy from birth to grade 12. The Literacy Essentials provide research-proven, effective approaches to markedly improve literacy skills among Michigan's students. Support for educator training includes free online modules and additional resources available at literacyessentials.org. Additionally, the Early Literacy Coaching Network provides I S D and district coaches and continuous professional learning on the essentials, essential practices, and provides coaches with access to researchers who develop the materials. The second is Guidance on Early Literacy Assessment Systems. The literacy team at M D E commissioned the Michigan Assessment Consortium to help create guidance to districts on developing early literacy assessment systems. Until now, this type of guidance did not exist, but Michigan has led the way in the work of combining early literacy instruction and knowledge of early literacy assessment systems. The guidance articulates key ideas and principles about the development and assessment of literacy and how those principles contribute to assessment system models that can be designed and implemented to support the literacy achievement of all Michigan students. The third ongoing effort is to support districts in the implementation of the Read by Grade Three Law. The department has provided updates and information through frequent memos, a listserv designated to Read by Grade Three information, communication, and family toolkits, and sample materials such as a copy of the Set B Retention Letter made available in multiple languages. These materials are all available on the Read by Grade Three portion of the M D E literacy webpage. And finally, M D E has started to develop supports for districts on engaging families specifically for literacy by leveraging the existing My Family, Michigan's Family Engagement Framework. The department worked to create family engagement for literacy resources. The content of the documents provide guidance for administrators, educators, and families. The strategies include reading aloud to children, writing with children, and having abundant reading materials. These resources are available on the Family Engagement section of the M D E literacy webpage. This concludes this segment of the presentation on efforts to improve early literacy achievement. I will now turn the presentation back to Sheila.
Thank you, Shelley, and thank you, Paula. On Dr. Rice, this concludes our presentation on Michigan's Strategic Education Plan Goal to Improve Early Literacy Achievement. We appreciate the opportunity to share this presentation on literacy with the State Board of Education during March because we know that March is Reading Month. So back to you, Dr. Rice.
Thank you very much. Thank you, ladies. We appreciate your presentation. Well done. Board members, questions, comments, your reflections? I have, it looks like Nikki, I'm getting a message. Is that a, is that a comment, Ms. Snyder?
No, I don't think I am doing a message, but I, again, I'm not quite sure how much chat is getting here today.
Okay, very good, very good. Dr. Olbridge and Ms. Lipton.
I just wanted to say how great this presentation was. This is really exciting to see all the work that's happening. I think the results are, speak for themselves. We're definitely moving in the right direction with early literacy. And, and just the diversity of programs and opportunities that are being offered to schools and to students is just phenomenal. And so I applaud everyone for all of your hard work. I think this is exciting and obviously is going to make a huge difference for our state and for our kids. So thank you.
Thank you, President Olbridge. Ms. Lipton, a question?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. The, um, the website is an amazing resource, and I've had a chance to, um, sort of look, look through it myself, and your presentation sort of underscored that. What efforts, um, or have you thought about efforts to sort of help link the resources to the people? I see, uh, you shaking your head, and just in terms of, you know, are there things that, um, that, that we as a board can assist? But really, the question going to, any thoughts on taking this wonderful and amazing resource and getting it into the hands of really the, the people on the ground that, that, that really can sort of get their hands dirty and, and, and use it and, and help continue in the forward-going progress that we're making?
Right. All of these, all of these resources are shared with our 832 LEAs, with the 56 ISDs. We share them in memos. We share them in guidance documents. We share them in professional development sessions with webinars, in conferences. Ms. Probstal referenced the conference that was held a couple of weeks ago. So there is a, there's a, an ongoing effort to take two-dimensional documents and make them three dimensions experiential. I, I leave it open to our presenters, Ms. Alice, Dr. Daniels, Ms. Probstal, for additional reflections?
Dr. Rice, I believe that you have covered all of the venues as well as the vehicles that we use for communicating the resources that are on, on the department's website related to literacy. So we use, we use every venue and vehicle possible to get the message out to the educator on the resources that are available on our website.
One of the things, one of the things that we're beginning to, to do additionally is to expand our partnerships. So for example, the Library of Michigan, which is a part of the Michigan Department of Education, partnered with us on a number of these most recent activities, on the, on the Authors of Color, number one, on the African-American Authors Calendar, number two, in part on the Equity and Literacy Document, number three. M A I S A, a longtime partner of ours, M A E M, which is our media specialist, they, they've partnered with us on diversity in, in literature. And so when we do those partnerings, what we're able to do is to access their membership in a different way. We've asked a number of our associations to amplify our message as we amplify their messages so that we're able to, to build on particular themes. The, the themes of in-literacy, the themes of diversity, identity, engagement, relevance, joy, they're huge, and bless you. We know that, that literacy is in part about the technical. There's no question that kids need to crack the code. But once they crack the code, if you will, they have to have a reason for, for going into those books. It's one thing that I can read technically. It's another thing that I want to read every day to extract meaning about my life to help me construct my world and to, and to construct my place in navigating that, that world. That's, that's hugely important for our young people and particularly for our young people of color, for our first-generation students, students who are going to be first gen, graduating from high school, first gen going to college, first gen graduating from college. The, the issue of why reading is as important as how reading, that it's not simply a how reading, it's also by extension, why do I want to read? Now that I've learned, why do I want to continue to read so that I become faster, so that I have more comprehension, so I have more background knowledge, all of which helps me read more and more and learn more and more?
And yes, and, and the, thank you, thank you for that. I just, I, I do think it's extremely important to oftentimes meet some of our just, our struggling readers and just to sort of be, be cognizant of the fact that people access or the, the potential for people to access information and these resources can come in, in a variety of, of venues. And so I would just, to urge you to, you know, continue the excellent thinking in terms of where people are accessing the, these resources. School, certainly. But I think about a program that I learned of a couple of years ago in New York where books were brought into laundromats, believe it or not, libraries that were built in laundromats. libraries that were built in laundromats. Why? On the theory that people spend time with their children while they're doing their laundry. They're sort of captive and to give the children something to do. And it was really just sort of a really amazing, beautiful program. I haven't followed it. I don't know if it's expanded beyond New York. But the point being that this was sort of an out-of-the-box thought process in terms of, yes, we have these wonderful materials, but now, we're going to bring them and make them more easily accessible and meet people where they're at. So, thank you. And I would just challenge everyone to keep thinking about those types of opportunities for particularly our struggling readers and students, economically disadvantaged students among us.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Dr. Pugh, you had a "yay" in the chat. I don't know if you wanted to extend upon that.
That was in regard to the data that was presented up front that was showing that we were heading in the right direction. Thank you for the presentation. Cassandra, I said it best, refreshing information, the approaches that you're taking to meet our children where they are. I just, thank you for those efforts.
Thank you. Other board members, thoughts or reflections? Going once and twice, hearing and seeing none. It is 11:25. Presenters, we appreciate you. Ms. Alice, Dr. Daniels, Ms. Probstal, thank you very, very much for your sharing. And we wish you a very, very good day.
Thank you so much.
Board members, the time is now 11:25 a.m. A quorum of the board is present. Regular meeting is convened. As you're aware, the superintendent's evaluation is on the agenda this afternoon. It is an annual evaluation according to Section 8A of the Open Meetings Act. Public officer can request a closed session to consider a periodic personnel evaluation and traditionally does. Therefore, I will entertain a motion to convene the closed session followed by a roll call vote. So, I believe Dr. Albrecht has the motion.
Yes, I move that the State Board of Education convene in closed session at the request of Dr. Michael Rice, Superintendent of Public Instruction, in order to consider a periodic personnel evaluation of the Superintendent of Public Instruction as provided in Section 8A of the Open Meetings Act.
So, we have a motion, and we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. If we could do a roll call vote, please.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Nikki Snyder?
Yes.
Okay. Strahan?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. We